So we will open up the meeting for June 30th, 2020, Planning Board Meeting. So two things, one is we are recording this. If anybody wishes to record it, they are welcome to, they just need to let us know now. Anybody recording it? Other thing is because we are doing it in this manner, we're just want to identify the people who are on so that there's a clear record as we go forward here. So I'm going to just pull up my participant list here. So from the board, I see that we have Marcus Phelps and Dave Spina, Sutton, and Jessica Thornton. We have Doug Moglen, we have Joe Didi, we have Megan Lightcap, and we have Alan Schlesler. And then for community members who are joining us, I see a, if I mispronounce it, please just yell at me, Janet Masha. Is that correct?
Masha.
Masha, thank you. And I see Dr. Walz here, Joseph Walz.
Correct.
And I see one other, Chris K., is that?
Hello, from our Lebec Associates, I'll be presenting for Mr. Walz.
Perfect, okay. Is there anybody that I missed? Obviously myself as well, I don't think I listed that, but, okay. So let's start with the 7 o'clock Town Planners Report. Alan?
Good evening. We've got quite a few questions, a lot of questions on vacant lands and lands that are deemed to be unbuildable, but they may be buildable now. The first one is 138 Point Grove Road, it's in a B, it's in a B-zone, and it's a house that is having, needs almost to be rebuilt. And because it's in the B-zone, they're going to have to build it on the existing footprint, you know, replace it on the existing footprint, because in the B-zone, you're not allowed to have houses or residences. And it's non-conforming as it is, so the gentleman understood that. Also, we had questions from the Select Board and a few others on the old Krabby Joes. And there was a question, is can it be used for anything other than the, that's in the B-zone? And again, the B-zone, you're not allowed to have apartments or residences. And the only way, he would have to get a zone change all the way down past Congamon Road on the south side, which wouldn't seem to be very practical, because his lot doesn't look like it could really hold more than two, possibly three homes on the lot, and it wouldn't be, doesn't feel like it's be beneficial to him on that. I've reached out and left many messages to have him call, but to no avail. Also, on number nine, Wood Road, it's in an R20 zone, and they have a very small lot, it's off of Berkshire Avenue. And he wanted information on the side, front, and rear yards, which was supplied to him. Also, I had a few questions regarding 38 Moore Binding Road. You know what, we do have a letter and asking if the, if the town is interested in it, because it's in Chapter 61. And that, it's revised a little bit, but ultimately, it's a large lot, it's 85 some acres. Right now, they just want to pull out one lot, there's an existing house, so they want to pull that out of the agricultural, for a building lot, which I believe the, their attorney has sent necessary information into the Select Board. And I believe they've had conversations with Conservation and a few other groups. It just so happens, that's one of the ones that it's going to be on an A&R later on, after Dr. Walz's project.
Okay.
Also, I've been reviewing number six, zero, 772 and 774, the site plan, the stormwater management plans, and all the necessary information that goes along with that. Another one would be 23 Veteran Street, again, it's a very extremely small lot, and they've only received permission to put in a one-bedroom septic, if they were to take the house down and build on the existing footprint, which it's, that only has a 40-foot frontage. So it seems to be a hardship there also. And just a little while ago, I received a call from somebody on White Street, I won't mention their name, but they're inquiring about the bed and breakfast use in Southwick, which currently, right now, under customary home, it's not allowed. And I know the past building inspector, he hasn't been allowing them. And from what I understand, there's an attorney from the town looking at this. And it's a mixed reaction, because of course, people want to rent their bed and bath out. But the thing is, all these neighborhoods, and the lots are very small along the lake, the people who join them are upset, because, you know, they're trying to live peacefully in harmony with their next-door neighbor, and you have new people coming in to party and have a good time, it might be destructive. So that's been something that's been looked at for quite some time. And we really, right now, the only thing we have is it's not allowed. So that may resurrect that again. And that will be it.
All right. 710, Public Comments. Is there anybody who has something to bring to the Board's attention that isn't on the agenda? Okay. All right, 715.
Would you, Mike, are you going to elect Jessica as being a voting member?
I am, thank you for reminder, that is always useful, since I will. So, 715, 772, 774 College Highway Public Hearing. Let me read this in first. Notice of public hearing for Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, 7:15 PM, 772 and 774 College Highway. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, that the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 30th, 2020, at 7:15 PM via Zoom on an application by Walz Realty LLC. For a special permit, site plan approval, and stormwater management permit, property located at 772 and 774 College Highway, zoned as BR. Property is shown on current assessors map, 27 parcels, eight, nine, and 10. Zoom meeting ID and password and telephone access is given. The applicant proposes to build a mixed-use development on property performance with the code of Southwick zoning bylaws, Chapter 1.5, in sections nine, 10, 17, and 36.1. Copy of the application and the plans may be inspected by contacting the Town Planner, Alan Schlesler, at his email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and man who designated, Michael Doherty, Chairperson, Southwick Planning Board. Okay. So the first thing I will do is designate Jessica Thornton as a voting member on this application, unless there is a objection there to hearing none. It's also, I'll make sure we have a clear record that Dick Otzinger has, is now here in the Zoom meeting, as well as one other individual. If you could just kindly, I think on the phone, identify yourself, just so we have a record of who's here. Let's see. Would the person who's, who has called in kindly identify themselves?
We're on, I don't know, Amadeo and Diane Giordano. I don't know if that's who you're looking for or not right now.
Yes, thank you. Could you just say your name again, spell it for me?
Diane and Amadeo Giordano, G-I-O-R-D-A-N-O.
Okay, thank you. All right.
We could get in through the Zoom website.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I, we just, normally when these are held, we, we have a sign-in sheet, because it's difficult to tell who's here, we just kind of do this as people have entered the meeting, just so we identify who's here.
Okay.
Okay, so, having read the notice, Chris, if you want to give your presentation, and then we can go from there.
Hello, my name is Christopher Carney. I work as a civil engineer and land surveyor over at our Lebec Associates. We are happy to work with Dr. Walz on this project, and I'm going to ask that I can share my screen or be given permission to share?
Give me one second here. Doug, I'm not sure I can do it from mine, for some reason. Maybe because I didn't start.
Doug's muted.
Megan, why don't you, can you see if you can do it on yours?
He's the host.
You're listed as the host, Megan. Doug and I are just co-hosts.
Okay.
I just, I don't have an option to.
How about that?
Great.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, so hopefully you're all seeing at this point the cover sheet for the proposed mixed-use development at 772, 774 College Highway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can't see anything.
What was that?
We can't see anything. I don't know what.
Are there people on the telephone?
On the telephone, you're not going to be able to see it. It's simply in the Zoom meeting. If you could sign into Zoom, you can see it, but otherwise, you're not going to be able to.
It wouldn't let us get into Zoom. Okay.
Mike, you might have to give them the Zoom number.
Want me to text them the link?
Password required.
I didn't know the password. We didn't have a password.
Yeah.
Okay, hang on.
So the password is 201129.
Thank you.
And just to confirm, meeting ID is 897-68634481.
I think I had that.
Though I'm not sure the password was required in this one, but I could be wrong. Maybe I, I'm listed as a co-host, so I'm not sure.
It did ask me, it did ask me for a password.
Okay.
And the password was on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So I'm going to continue with the presentation?
Yes, please.
Yep. So this is a proposed mixed-use development, 772, 774 College Highway in Southwick, Massachusetts. It's prepared for Dr. Walz. It is located north of formerly Southwick Country Club on College Highway. And since we're, given all this technology, I decided to use a bit of it. So this is where the site is, we can zoom out a little bit. This would be the former golf course. And this farmland with house is the area of proposed development. And if I zoom in here, this will be approximately where the proposed driveway would be entering the property, right here, just so we're all familiar with where this site is. As you can see, it's a pretty flat site, general. So that's described here on the existing conditions plan. As you see, topography, while we show some contours, these are one-foot contour intervals on a 50-scale plan, so the slopes out here are very minor, especially in this northern section of the property. The southern section of the property has a wetland area, as well as Kellogg Brook over to the east side of the property. So we made sure to try to limit any impacts on these wetland in riverfront areas while we were coming up with a design, though we will be submitting this or be at a public meeting for conservation-related approvals at a future time. So currently, the site has agricultural land, as well as a single-family residence here. So this would be a phasing plan for proposed property. Phase one is what was submitted here. Is everyone hearing an echo right now?
Yeah, we're getting a beeping sound of some sort.
There you go.
So phase one was what was submitted to the town. That includes a mixed-use building out front, as well as two office warehouse mixed-use buildings. This building would be dental, retail, and residential uses, while these would be office warehouse uses. After phase one, at some point down the road, phase two would, at this point, conceptually proposes a medical space, some retail spaces, as well as some restaurant spaces. And then after that, phase three is still early on in the conceptual design process, and would take up the shaded area at the northwest corner of the property. I think, after speaking with Dr. Walz, the timeframe for these projects is unknown. I think there's definitely some unknowns in the commercial and residential markets right now. I think waiting to understand how COVID impacts tendencies across Western Massachusetts is going to be an important step before we can commit to the future use of the property. But phase one has been proposed and ready to move forward. So I'll skip past the note sheets, and we'll head towards the demolition and removal sheet. This shows proposed demolition and removal on the site, and that would include the removal of paved driveways, the house and garage, as well as installation of erosion control measures. And the reason we put that on this sheet is because one of the first things we have to do out on a site is make sure to put these erosion control measures in in order to eliminate sedimentation moving off the site into roadways or surrounding properties. So this would be the first phase of construction. After the removal of these buildings, or in unison with those, there would be some tree clearing in order to accommodate future development. The next sheet that we were looking at is the Layout and Material Sheet. This shows the three buildings being proposed. This first building being approximately 7,500 square foot medical, retail, and residential use building. You can see some internal dashed lines in here. This southerly portion of the building would be a dental slash medical office. The northern, the use of these northern two spaces are retail right now. And then above this building are two residential units. The basement of this structure is still undetermined. Part of the building will be a slab on grade, and part of the building would be a full basement to accommodate utilities. Parking is shown in the front of this building. That would primarily be used for customers to this building, and then parking in the rear would be for the residential use on the property, as well as employee parking to service this building. Building two and three both have parking in the front, generally in the same sort of method. They would enter office spaces in the front. And each one of these four units in each building would have a separate access door to enter the office portion. And then you have this dash portion, which would be a warehouse building. And then there would be overhead doors on the southerly side of these buildings for a garage-type use, not necessarily mechanics garage, but a warehousing. So they'd be able to accept deliveries from box trucks and similar vehicles. The parking has been spread throughout the site so that it serves each use independently, and we've tried to make sure that the number of parking spaces surrounding each building conforms to the, generally conforms to the use of that building. So we can zoom in if you, it looks like I don't have Zoom function. So there is a parking tally provided on this sheet, and it breaks down the parking requirements for each building. And that matches pretty well with how many parking spaces are shown for each individual building. And we did that in order to limit pedestrian traffic throughout the site. So pedestrians, vehicles that park here would use building one, and vehicles parking here would use buildings two and three. There wouldn't be a need for pedestrians to walk from building one to building three for parking reasons. The site's generally batuminous paved areas, with the appropriate drive aisles of 24 feet width, and the appropriate parking stall sizes of 10 by 20. Van and ADA compliant parking spaces are provided, based on the 521 CMR ADA requirements. All the parking stalls we're showing are van-compliant parking stalls, and that allows any customer with any disability to access the building through a easier van-accessible parking space. Curbing out here is proposed to be a Cape Cod berm, which is a gently sloped berm. It's a batuminous material, but the slopes of it allow for plowing and help the maintenance and help the lifespan of the curbing. So unlike a type-two curb with the steep slope, these ones have a more mild slope. At the end of this proposed driveway, there's a cul-de-sac, and that would help vehicles, including fire apparatuses, turn around and exit the site. But generally, we're not expecting large trucks to come into the site. The anticipated design vehicle would generally be cars and trucks, regular cars and trucks, as well as some box trucks periodically for deliveries into these buildings two and three. Dumpsters are provided here for the residential and retail space out front, and here for the, these mixed-use buildings to the east. Sidewalks are proposed, connecting parking areas to means of egress for each building. Fences are also proposed along this line in between the two uses in order to keep them separated, as well as some guardrails where there are more significant slopes in order to help vehicular safety. The next sheet is this, the grading sheet. We were able to grade this site, so that stormwater, grading and stormwater are very closely intertwined, so I'll be speaking about both of those for this sheet. Generally, designs like this incorporate catch basins, manholes, water quality units, and flared end pipe sections. That's a design type which is, requires more maintenance and has a shorter lifespan due to the maintenance requirements of that type of design. So for this site, because of the topography out there, and because of excellent soil conditions out there, we were able to design this parking lot to not have catch basins, and simply flow from gray breaks that are shown here down aisles into vegetated filter strips, would be the MAST DEP term. It's a stone diaphragm with a vegetated area, which treats water before it flows into a stormwater basin. These stormwater basins are equipped with a sediment for bay. So this treatment train would be a level spreader, peystone diaphragm at the outlet of stormwater, and then a vegetated filter strip that cleans water before it enters a sediment for bay. That sediment for bay would hold a certain amount of water in order to have more particles settle to the bottom in the sediment for bay before it enters this actual stormwater basin, where the majority of infiltration will occur. That's when stormwater enters groundwater. So because of this design, the slope, slopes are more of a challenge, right? You don't have catch basins placed everywhere, so in some areas of the site, slopes are as low as 1%, and in some areas of the site, slopes are as high as 7% or 8%. We feel comfortable that this design is safe for everyone out there, as well as a very good stormwater solution. It's where MAST DEP, when we bring these types of designs to MAST DEP, this is what they're hoping to see versus the traditional catch basin to subsurface system. Spot grades are shown throughout the site plan, and I'll zoom into some of those, just to show you an example of what we're looking at. So for these, we have boxes here showing where ADA parking is, handicap accessible parking, which has minimal grade requirements of 2% cross slope. So we show spot elevations to show that none of the areas within these handicaps stalls would be over 2% in grade. We provide spot elevations along what I'll call a gutter line. This would be where water flows, but generally, the way topography plans work out is that we design gutters, but there's cross elevations. And the reason I'm getting into depth with this is there was a comment from, I think Randy Brown, about the grades, how they're being pretty mild. While I agree that they're mild, they do conform to all Southwick regulations, as well as, there's no grade on the site lower than 1%, and that is very traditional design grade. So once we get out of these parking areas, we'll hit vegetated areas, slopes in vegetated or grassed areas will be steeper. That's pretty normal for all designs. So you're seeing some lines of topography here. This would be a stormwater basin, a stormwater basin number one. This will handle all the storm water from the entrance area to here and south. So everything from the building and the parking area, and this front area, slopes generally in a southerly direction towards this basin, before it would eventually flow into groundwater and to this wetland. Part of regulations when designing these basins are to make sure there's an emergency overflow, so that if this stormwater basin ever had a storm event larger than the 100-year storm, that water would safely flow out of this fabric area and treated area, and flow towards this wetland. But we designed this basin to accommodate the 100-year storm, which means these emergency overflows should really never see use. 100-year storm event is 6.5 inches of rain within a 24-hour time span, so that's a significant amount of rain. And to put that in perspective, I don't think anyone on this Zoom meeting has seen 100-year storm in Western Massachusetts. I believe the last one was back in 1930, 1932. So these are rare, as, as they're named, rare events should be happening every 100 years. And this stormwater basin number two was designed in a similar way to accommodate the 100 year storm with no overflow. That means we're expecting all the stormwater to be held in this basin until it floats or is infiltrated through the bottom of the basin and into existing groundwater. That provides a great design, because it makes sure that groundwater is recharged and able to enter the wetland area to the south, and the river area to the east, without eroding the topsoil, but also without de-watering the wetland. So wetland boundaries should remain the same, both in pre- and post-development conditions, which is a great design feature for this proposed site development. I discussed this building one, catchment area. So these building two and three generally slope southerly towards this rear section of the building, and then easterly, until they hit the same type of design, a peystone diaphragm, which helps spread the water out into a wide area. Then it flows down a vegetated filter strip right here to clean before it enters a sediment for bay for additional cleaning, before entering the actual basin for infiltration. These basins are designed in order to function without these circles shown in here. These are dry wells we're showing in here. We, we like to put these dry wells in as an extra measure, and it provides a more functional and longer lifespan to these basins. But most importantly, it allows water to get into the ground during frozen ground conditions. This is something that I think a lot of proposed site plans don't incorporate enough of, is that in the springtime, when the ground is still frozen, but you have a rain event, basins like this do not function properly for a short period of time every year. So you can imagine a rain event happening out here while there's frozen ground. All the water would flow into this basin, and it wouldn't be able to get through the ground and into groundwater. It would just sit on this frozen level, layer. And so these dry wells are very important, because they allow the water to enter the dry wells and get into the groundwater during these vulnerable times. Additionally, of course, in the springtime, we have snow melt and ice melt, and so all of those types of melts can be better infiltrated because of these basins. I'm bringing this up because this is directly related to some comments we've received from the town of Southwick. I'm bringing this up because this is directly related to some comments we've received from the town of Southwick. And so that's gonna get me through the grading plan. I guess this this plan also shows the same erosion control measures as shown on the demolition and removal plan. A silt fence is shown at the downgrade limit of work as well as an anti-tracking apron. Because we're not proposing any catch basins, there's no sedimentation silt sacks or anything proposed, which is pretty typical for catch basin design. I think that's good for this sheet. So the next sheet we'll be discussing is the drainage and utility plan. This discusses uh this has more detail for all of these infiltration basins as well as all of the underground utility connections, including electric, gas, and water. Uh I think at this point, I probably bored you with the stormwater infiltration basin, so I'll focus on these utility connections. We're proposing a water connection. Uh there's a existing water line in the west side of College Highway. Uh we're proposing a a a full-width pavement cut in order to access the water line in College Highway. It's my understanding that College Highway was recently repaved, and so we want to leave it in high quality. Uh some of these pavement cuts would only, they typically would only reach to the the end of proposed piping. But because of the recently paved situation on College Highway, we're doing a full-width replacement cut. Uh and that should be in conformance with MastDOT requirements for this property. Uh other utility connections included gas connection, which would be to an underground gas line, but fortunately, that underground gas line is is outside of the area within College Highway. So here you'd see the paving and the gas line being to the east side of the paved area of College Highway. And then we're showing an underground utility or underground electric connection that would run from an existing utility pole here in underground to a manhole and then be distributed throughout the site. Uh it we received a comment about waterline sizing out here, and and this is a a comment we regularly receive at this stage of development. Uh unfortunately, um Dr. Walls is is stuck in a a position where before we do, or he requests um specific architectural designs, including mechanical engineering designs for his buildings. I think he's looking for a feel for whether these projects will be permitting permitted on a municipal level. I don't think he'd like to waste his money sizing waterlines if this project is not going to be approved. So uh we are a- always happy to work with the utility provider. So for the waterline connection, Southwick DPW or Water Department, and make sure that we are installing waterlines uh in conformance with all of their applicable regulations. Same goes for gas, which I know that is not a Southwick uh utility. And electric, which is also not a Southwick utility, but we would be sizing these lines based on architectural and mechanical engineering recommendations. And but unfortunately, at this point in the development process, the the sizes of these lines are are not known. Uh the we're showing water, gas, and electric connections. What we're not showing a connection for is sanitary sewer. There is no sanitary sewer in existence on College Highway at this point, so we're showing um a septic systems proposed. There would be a joint septic system for building two and three and a single septic system for building one. Um these are traditional leach field systems with a septic tank. Uh they would be conforming to all Title V regulations in Massachusetts. Uh this the designs you're seeing um are schematic, but they reflect the anticipated use based on Title V flow rates. Uh especially for this system, this front system, it because of the medical use uh of building one, this septic system becomes uh more cumbersome in design and and a lot more regulations from a Title Pi- Title V perspective, including tight tanks for for medical waste. So uh water wastewater that leaves a dental chair is considered hazardous, so it has to be held in a specific tank and not discharged into the ground. And so all of those things are being considered and and are shown on this site plan. Schematically, uh we actually reached out to a septic specialist to help us with these designs who specializes in medical and dental office-type septic system. So what you're seeing, while it's schematic in nature, it's a well-developed schematic plan. So you see a septic tank here. This would be labeled as a tight tank for dental waste. That would need to be pumped probably on about a yearly basis. There would be a septic tank coming out here to pump here, which is pretty typical for a septic tank. Now followed by this the separate septic tank, which would feed the underground leach field here. Uh and again, these tanks are probably sized to be serviced once every year. They would be serviced outside of business hours. I feel pretty good about the drainage and utility plan presentation. I think we've covered mostly everything this sheet has to offer. Uh the next sheet is a landscaping plan. Uh Southwick doesn't have a a lot of regulations when it comes to landscaping. I think we could have planted just a few trees and been conformant with Southwick bylaws, but um Dr. Walls wanted to make his development as attractive as poss- as possible to tenants as well as uh good for the town of Southwick. So there's a number of plants uh proposed throughout this project. Uh some beautiful frontage street trees, um some, I believe, Hawthorns here. Uh the dumpster areas would be uh blocked by not only a perimeter stockade fence around the dumpster areas, but also an arborvitae hedgerow around this dumpster area to shield it. Uh there's also arborvitae row between these two uses so that that this building one in residential use is properly shielded from building two and three uh as well as just other ornamental type plantings uh in the surrounding parking areas. And then where there is a wetland impact, so here is the wetland area. This would be the fifty-foot buffer. And then we have the hundred-foot buffer area. So uh where there is impacts within this hundred-foot buffer, uh we're proposing some native witch hazel plantings along those banks in order to uh reestablish wildlife habitat in those areas. But we really did our best to keep all of those impacts outside of the hundred-year uh hundred-foot buffer to wetlands. And we kept the entirety of the development outside of the fifty-foot buffer to wetlands. I know this is under conservation jurisdiction, but it's always good to discuss these conservation-related issues with you. Um the uh the next sheets are detailed sheets. These show things like the concrete uh bituminous Cape Cod-style burn, which I mentioned is this is a shallower sloped curb which holds up the plowing but still contains stormwater. Seems like most designs are headed this way because of longevity as well as the ability to contain stormwater within a site. Um these other details are not very interesting. Uh dumpster enclosure with stockade fence as well as ADA compliant curb cuts and ramps, wooden guardrails to protect vehicles from steeper slopes surrounding paved areas, bicycle racks which are shown on this property for the residential use. And then a variety of different uh water main and utility connection details uh as well as uh cross-section details of all the surface basins that we're showing. Uh then uh as part of this plan, uh some light poles are proposed in order to keep the site safe and illuminated uh whenever necessary. So this plan shows locations of light poles, which are also shown on the site plans. But it shows locations of these light poles as well as the anticipated foot candle values from these. And so uh like most developments of this nature, uh foot candle ranges should range from um anywhere from point-five to five-foot candles. More than five-foot candles can uh be a bit of a nuisance, but uh we subcontract all of these uh lighting plans out to illuminate Vanguard down in Windsor, Connecticut. They do a really good job and they make sure, all their fixtures are dark, American Dark Sky approved, so they do not uh inhibit star observations and as well as they're shielded so that light is only projected in the downward way uh in order to avoid light trespass over property lines. That becomes less important for this project just because of the location of this project being away from really any other houses. I don't think there's a house within hundreds of feet of this proposed development, so I think shielding of illuminated lights is is not really much of a concern for that project. Yet, they are. Uh and so that's the end of the plan set. Um I think at at this point, we have more figures as including architecturals and customer features to share, but I think we can get to those uh as questions come up.
Okay, um so let me, why don't we do this? Let me read into the record, um and I'll put them up on the screen so people can read it, read along or the comments from the fire department as well as uh DPW. Um we can kind of, Chris, if you could, we'll just kind of address them as we go along. I know you've already addressed a a lot of them as you made your presentation, but since there's a lot there, um you know, just refresh up uh as we go through them. But let me just um Megan, could you just set me up so that I could share my screen?
Like just just a little background for these, this parcel. This parcel is in the VR zone and uh they came in for a zone change back in May of last year. So all three parcels are now business restricted. Well, before, part of it was zone R twenty of the lower section. So they are, they are compliant. And then the reason I'm bringing that up is because in our business restricted, we are allowing mixed-use apartments to be on the second floor as long as they're proper from the road, have their own individual parking, which um was all addressed very, very well by the the engineer.
Just for memory refresher, here is the zone change plan. And I'll be happy to stop sharing if you'd like to pick up, Michael.
No, go, I mean, go ahead if you need to keep going. I can wait a minute here.
I just brought this up because Alan had mentioned the zoning.
Okay. So um let me just pull this up here. Have anybody, everybody see the fire department? Comments here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So um Fire Department review of Plan seventy-two, seven seventy-four College Highway dated June ninth, twenty twenty. Uh after review of supplied plans, I have the following comments slash concerns. Uh first building listed square footage conflicts. Uh main building listed as seventy-five hundred square feet, yet four units at seventeen forty-six square feet, units equals sixty-nine eighty-four. Uh the upstairs residential units are listed as fifteen thirty-four each with two units, which equals thirty-six-eight. Basement footage is not mentioned with basement included in total square footage. Building may require sprinkler.
So I think we're gonna do our best to limit uh fire, the requirement for sprinklers, which I believe is ten thousand square foot for for this type of building. So I think we're going to make sure the design keeps this and and Dr. Walls, please uh let me know if I'm misspeaking, but I think it would be cost-effective for us to keep the building square footage below ten thousand square feet. While I I can uh appreciate and definitely respect all these comments, the the plans that were provided, the architectural plans are definitely conceptual in nature and that that four-unit times seven seventeen forty-six, uh seventeen forty-six is a square footage for one of the units, but uh i- if we really dig into the details of the architectural plans, that they're not quite as clear as four times seven forty-six due to hallway spaces, mezzanines, and and areas like that. Uh and um if I could share again.
A lot, a lot of these will be addressed when they go, when they do come in for their building permit. That's when the fire department will 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 see the final product and they can base a better list for the building inspector as well as the applicant.
Yeah, and I, standpoint, uh you know, it's obviously, it sounds like it's close enough and you're, you obviously have your intent, so that'll be dealt with later on. It's not something that's so egregious now that we need to to deal with it in this, in this setting.
Exactly. Just the understanding that we'll aim to not have sprinklers for these buildings.
Next, uh on the letter is the hydrant location. There's only one hydrant in kid at the end of the facility driveway. We will require an additional hydrant at the entrance of the driveway. Um any issues with that?
Well, so this is something I meant to discuss, um existing condition sheet, which I I understand was not included in our original submittal package for some reason, which is uh my apologies for for that omission. But uh if we could put that sheet back up, we would notice that there's some existing hydrants along the west side of College Highway in this area. So our field crew located a hydrant uh right here at the end of the guardrail. So it was a hydrant halfway up this property and a hydrant here. So they're showing three hydrants. Uh and and as you know, our entrance driveway would be about here, but the proposed building being in this this general area here.
I don't think it's there.
That isn't showing, Chris. I think you, sorry, did you relinquish your, your sheen scurrying to Michael Doherty?
Oh, is this, is it up now here?
There we go.
Sorry. So this is, this being the existing house and the access drive coming in, uh our field crew located at the end of the guardrail right here, a hydrant on the west side of College Highway as well as another hydrant uh across from agricultural land and another one here. Uh and then our proposed hydrant would land in this general area. We're not against putting in another hydrant in this area, but it would be probably about a hundred feet away from what our field crew says and is an existing hydrant. Uh but again, we're not against the the requirement of a hydrant, but I think this piece of information wasn't um shown to the fire department during the original submittal. So I just asked that they would take a look at this and determine whether they still need the hydrant at the driveway entrance.
Chris, while you have that up, just so that I can conceptualize this, I, you went through it before and I may have just missed it or didn't look at it quick enough. Where is the driveway, the proposed driveway, you know, located on the, you know, as compared to the existing um existing property?
Yeah, so this is, it does get tricky to see this stuff. Um but it right under this phase one would be the existing um garage.
Is the, is the um is the zone line on this drawing right here?
You know, no, I mean, these plants get so congested, we try to freeze as much as is unnecessary, so.
The zone line is to the south of the project.
Well, there's a zone. Right, okay, right, right.
And here's where, here, but again, I don't think this zone line is real anymore, unfortunately, but uh this is where this.
It was extended to the south.
Yeah.
Along, along the property line.
So it's here.
You can see it. You know, it's down below, actually below the wetland.
Okay. And so here's uh the location of the existing hydrant right here, here. So really, this driveway comes in sort of opposite to existing hydrants on the west side of College Highway. So I just asked the fire department to take that into consideration because I don't think we uh provided that during the initial review.
So that driveway comes in basically between, right, almost dead center between those two. Chris, if you could just flip back to the existing for me just so I can conceptualize that. All right, so, okay. Okay, perfect.
And to just wrap this up, our proposed hydrant would be at the end.
Right by the coal, okay. Um, okay, uh let me um.
I have the fire department comments too.
Right, I for, I forward everything to him already.
Okay, we're going back. The two additional, the two buildings in phase one, I'm assuming that's what he's referring to. Do not state if there are second floors or mezzanines on those.
Single floor, sorry, si- single floor, no slab-on-grade, single floor.
Slab-on-grade, single floor for both buildings two and three.
Yep, and and I have some uh isometric renderings of those buildings. If you'd like to take a look.
Yeah, well, hold on. Why don't we just um, we'll go to those in one minute. Let me just, so the only one that there's gonna be residential over is gonna be the first building.
Correct.
Okay, um this references uh units required to have an alarm panel in the front lobbies, vestibules, uh Knox keybox at approved locations numbered and labeled in accordance with fire code and AHJ. Uh it any issues with those?
No issues.
Okay. Um and then future warehouse structures will indicate contents when occupied. Uh any issue with that? Any issue with that?
No, I mean, and based on tenant use, they may or may not have different types of materials, but we would of course conform to all required.
Right, okay, so, um, and I did want to talk about the warehouse later, but we can talk about that. So the, you had mentioned to address that comment, why don't you, if you want to pull up your screen, you can.
Since we're talking about these buildings first, I'll go with this. So this is a general look at a similar project in a different area, Western Massachusetts, which utilizes similar design. So these would be office spaces in the front and then truck areas in the back, as you see their box trucks, not large tractor trailer trucks. And these are four unit buildings, so just about right. Right about there would be the, the division from office space to warehouse space.
Okay. That would be building two and three.
Buildings two and three, so, and then building one. This would be the first floor plan as well as the architectural elevation to the plant. So I guess this is just what I was, these square footages are just very conceptual in nature and I can appreciate the fire department comment, but I don't think that they're quite accurate.
Okay.
And then for the floor plan of this building, we have, this shows the residential units upstairs. Their deck and entrances as well as the cellar plan. And you'll see that a portion of this is slab on grade and a portion is a cellar space, though this will be revised at, at the time of design. They didn't know where utility connections would be and those utility connections will want to enter into a cellar area. So the slab on grade shape will change over the final development.
Okay, and I mean, it seems like that's where you're going to have to be careful with hitting that sprinkler threshold because, you know, that the more you add in the cellar, the more you're going to have to take away up top there. All right. Okay, so let me go, let me turn now to the comments from DPW, give me one minute. All right, can everybody see those?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, comments from Randy Brown dated June twenty-fourth. DPW reviewed the mixed use development plans for seven seventy-two, seven seventy-four College Highway dated five, fifth, twenty twenty. It's prepared by our other vet associates and provides the following comments. One, the existing conditions plan was missing from the plan set provided to the town. Chris, you're going to provide that over to them.
Yes.
Two, the applicant should consider installing a guardrail and or bowiers in front of the stone spread, a stone level spreaders to prevent snow from being pushed into the vegetated filter strip and to prevent vehicles from entering this area.
I, you know, I think this diminishes the quality of the storm water management system, but it's not something we'd push back on. If, if bollards are recommended, we would definitely put them in. I, I don't think the risk of vehicles driving into stormwater basins is a high level of risk, in my opinion. But we're happy to conform to this as required. I think bollards would be the prudent solution just because of their square footage. That stone level spreader, the, the, the way it needs to function is water needs to enter it. And it may be somewhat channelized flow as it enters the level spreader, and then it needs to be spread out over that level spreader. So what bollards do is they take what should be a, a wide area of stormwater flow and they break that into channel flow, which then has to be redistributed by the level spreader. So they don't help the stormwater functionality. It's why we don't originally propose them there. But again, if this is something Southwick feels strongly about, we'd be happy to. Just generally, the Cape Cod curb is intended to be a, a mountable curb. Really, all curbing doesn't really stop vehicles from driving wherever they'd like to within a site, so.
Possibly instead of bio bollards, you might be able to do some cross hatching, painting on the driveway to make people aware that there is no parking in front of that.
Sure. That's a very reasonable solution. And they're, they're heavily gravelled areas that, I mean, to me, because I'm a stormwater engineer, I don't see them as parking areas, but I can appreciate that many public customers may not see it that way.
Yeah, I mean, and even, I guess, sign it, it could be part of it too. Just sort of call attention to it. All right, so let's keep going. The applicant should confirm the elevation of seasonal high groundwater. Verify that proper separation of two feet is being provided between the bottom of the dry wells and the groundwater level. If proper separation cannot be achieved, the applicant should consider horizontal integration units.
Yeah, uh, this is a practical comment, uh, but one we feel Philippe, the design engineer and the licensed engineer in the office who stamped these plans feels very strongly about the use of dry wells in these infiltration basins because of that springtime rain event. And so these are not a mass DEP requirement. Those basins are fully conformant without any dry well. So they could be removed and still meet all of Southwick and mass DEP requirements. But they just provide an extra level of comfort in some of these vulnerable times of year where stormwater functions, stormwater basins tend to not function as designed. So we've added them, um, which is a cost to the applicant and really gives flood protection to, uh, you know, Southwick. The test pits that were performed in this area were really conventional test pits. They go ten feet below the ground. And not, they, eleven test pits, eleven holes, ten feet in the ground were dug at this site. None of them encountered any seasonal high groundwater. So we had no design restraints. So the basin in question would be stormwater basin number two is a hole in the ground. So that hole in the ground is about four feet deep. And then the dry well is about another four feet deep. And then the separation from the bottom of the dry well to groundwater needs to be two feet. Now groundwater was never encountered on this site, but we have to assume that groundwater is at the bottom of a ten foot deep hole. Even though it was not found, that's as deep as we dug, therefore we make the assumption that that is where groundwater is. But it's, it's very reasonable to expect that if you, if we had dug two feet deeper, we wouldn't have encountered groundwater. And I, I think that just brings me back to, we're happy to work with Randy Brown and Mr. Goddard over at the town of Southwick and remove these dry wells or possibly dig a deeper test pit. But right now, we're really talking about, about a one foot distance where that separation, we can't technically prove that separation to groundwater exists out there. But it's, it, it would be surprising that we stopped right at ten feet, didn't find any, and then dig one more foot down and we find groundwater. It's unlikely. So all in all, I'm sorry to talk so much about this, but I think that dry wells are a good solution for all stormwater basins. But we're happy to conform to Southwick requirements. If they'd like them removed completely from the project, we will do that. That would be a cost savings to the applicant. Conversely, we could dig additional test pits out there if required.
No, and Chris, I, I appreciate you going through it and, you know, at least from my standpoint, and I can't speak to anybody else. My standpoint of processing thing, you know, hearing your response to it allows me to sort of triage it and figure out where I think, you know, where I think it belongs and whether it's something that, I mean, obviously going forward, I think you need to have a discussion with DPW and kind of work through some of this stuff. And, you know, if that's, and that, I, I'd leave that up to Randy and I, that, that works out fine. I need to figure out, you know, what are issues for this, what needs to go into a permit, things like that. So, you know, I appreciate your responses in this way. It, it sort of lets me process it in a, in a good manner.
When it's being built, anyways, it's a field condition. If they were to encounter groundwater, then they could put in more of a linear type dry well if they wanted to. Because, you know, no one would ever want to put a dry well in groundwater level because then it wouldn't function correctly. A lot of, a lot of these, they're conservative and they're, they're very thorough. These are just recommendations, but I think existing fetal, existing field conditions warrant what can happen or not.
Yeah, just to clarify, we're really, we, we will not encounter groundwater at the depth of the bottom of the basin. The only place we would encounter it is two feet below that dry well, uh, where we didn't dig a pit deep enough. And that's the two foot of separation from seasonal groundwater to the bottom of an infiltration structure. So, um, these, we can say confidently that these dry wells will not have water in them due to a water table.
Okay. All right, no, we'll keep going. And again, you know, we talked about this last time and I, and we've talked about it before. You know, Randy tends to be very detailed in these and a lot of more recommendations or, you know, just sort of observations to consider going forward. And they should be treated that way. I just, you know, I, I, I'm an attorney and I know enough about engineering to be dangerous. Much as I know about dentistry. So, um, I, it just, it allows me to sort of understand it better and process it better when it, when you guys speak about it. So, um, so if I can, you know, at least so I understand it moving forward. All right, so number four, um, the applicant should confirm the size of vehicles that will be, that will need to access the back of the warehouses, the turning radius seen tight to accommodate larger WB forty and WB sixty-five vehicle. I mean, obviously that's something you need to consider, you know, build roadway for what you want there.
Yeah, so we, so we used a template for this project based on an, uh, an already a similar site elsewhere in Western Massachusetts. And, and they don't accept tractor trailer deliveries in there. It's mostly box truck and pickup trucks. And so we don't expect heavy loading, which ties into the, a, a future comment. But for the turning radiuses, we worked off existing successful turning radiuses at, at other sites. So we feel like the proposed drive aisles and parking areas will accommodate the anticipated design vehicle. And, and beyond that, they conform to all required Southwick zoning ordinances. So this was, would be, in my opinion, up to the applicant on whether they feel like these radiuses are not appropriate, but they are conforming to the Southwick requirements.
All right, number five, driveway and parking area is very flat, in particular near College Highway. The applicant should consider installing catch base locations to help manage stormwater right off, especially in icy conditions. I mean, I think you addressed a lot of this during the presentation, but if you have anything to add, feel free to do so.
Just that, all the slopes are one percent or greater. And I think if Randy hears that, he'll be happy.
Okay.
It's difficult to calculate those slopes, but we, when we build these surfaces in AutoCAD, we have a lot of tools available. I could put them on screen if you wanted, but we drop spot slope elevations and arrows all over the site plans to know what the slope is everywhere throughout the site. And I can put it on screen if you'd like to see it, but there, because of the way spot elevations work, you don't see the diagonal slopes. You only see these linear slopes, so there's actually cross slopes to take into consideration. And it's probably why Randy sees slopes that might be near half a percent, but in reality, the cross slope on those areas is one percent or greater. So I think we could clear that up with Randy, no problem.
All right. Uh, I'll run through these specific sheet comments. Sheet C three, construction sequence note eleven, inlet protection should be installed concurrent with structure since this project only proposes dry well within the stormwater base.
Very good.
Sheet D one, two minutes, concrete paving detail, taking into account the frequency of heavy truck thing that facility, the applicant should consider a thicker layer of asphalt top to prevent premature failure on the driveway and parking area.
Hey, I think we had a miscommunication or there was an assumption made about the type of design vehicle for those back buildings. It is not large tractor trailer trucks.
Okay. Three, precast concrete manhole detail, please clarify where this item is being used.
We show the underground vaults for electric water and gas at the northwest corner of the property. So this manhole was just provided to be a potential detail for a water meter pit, a gas meter pit, or an underground electric meter pit. All of those utility connections will have to be reviewed by the utility provider and will have to conform to their requirements. So it's really on there as a placeholder for those meter pits.
Okay. The, number nine, the applicant should provide details on the size of the proposed new water service and anticipated daily water. Will this line be used to provide fire protection?
No fire protection, we, we're going to keep those design sizes below sprinkler. But it's, it's something that there'll be a lot of work put into sizing that because this water line, as phase two and three are developed, we want to make sure this water line is able to accommodate future development. So it will be oversized, uh, but at this point, we're going to need to work with the architect and mechanical engineer to come up with a final diameter for those sizes, for those.
And I'm assuming, given the use of Dr. facility, that that is going to be a decent size anyways.
I would think eight inch or greater.
All right. Let's see here. Ten, the applicant should provide details on the proposed water meter pit. We just talked about that. The applicant should install a tapping sleeve and valve tie into the existing water main so as not to take this line out of service during construction. Assume there's no issues with that.
No issues.
Number twelve, the existing one inch water service that feeds the building must be uncapped at the water main. Again, I assume there's no issue with that.
Yeah, there's no issue with that. I know that the existing house, the water line connection had already been cut and abandoned, I believe near curb. So I'm not sure if they're hoping that it would be in, in the pavement right at the main, which would require another pavement curb cut. But we have no issue with that, we'll work with the city and what's required.
All right. Thirteen, the checklist of the stormwater management permit application indicates that the location first, uh, construction materials, locations for construction trailers and locations for other items are included in this application, but this information is not shown. Please clarify the location for these.
We, we can provide the location.
Perfect. Fourteen, the applicant shall ensure all necessary approvals from Mass DOT for any work on College Highway.
Yep, very similar to mechanical and architectural plans. So this would be the first step. Uh, we, we work with Mass DOT very often, so we expect that this conforms to Mass DOT requirements. But their approval timeline has always been long and we have projects in there now and due to, due to this current crisis, that approval timeframe has been extended beyond long. So, um, we always hope for these municipal permits to go through and then we work with Mass DOT on their requirements. But we expect this to be approved by Mass DOT when they finally have the time to review it.
Uh, then finally, applicants should file for it and or secure following approvals, target construction, water service application, new driveway application, trench permit, nifty construction, general permit and stormwater pollution prevention plan. Again, I, you know, just calling your attention to that more than anything else.
Understood, very good.
Um, okay, so we can stuff that. Anything else, Chris, that you want to add before I turn it over to board members to ask questions?
No, but I'd like to make sure, Dr. Walls, it feels like everything that he would like to present is presented.
Absolutely, Dr. Walls, is there anything else you wanted to add to this?
I want to go with the architecturals for him.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You might want to see that architectural plan. You know, the front sides, rear.
Are the elevations there?
Yes.
Was there some questions in regards to colors and facade? Was that one thing that was going to be asked?
I believe those things will come up.
Okay. Happy to answer.
There we go.
Right, Marcus?
All right, so these are black and white, but Dr. Walls had done some research and gave me these images to share with you.
So yeah, I'm hopeful to have masonry on the front and on the left side since I think those will probably be the most visible from College Highway. I think it gives improved aesthetics and, and these are the color tones that I'm leaning towards.
And then for the flex building, just to refresh your mind, these are generally the size and shape of the building, but I think the following color scheme is a conception. the size and shape of the building, but I think the following color scheme is, uh, conceptually what's proposed about now, blue, shades of blue.
Blues and gray or blues and beige, yep.
And those buildings are basically going to be hidden by the medical building anyway from College Highway?
Correct. The, the medical building, a row of arborvitae's and a stockade fence, so well shielded.
What's the height, just the, uh, when I saw that picture, what's the height of those compared to the height of the medical building?
Well, the medical building would be that, uh, two-story, uh, like a full two-story building, so, uh, shorter. The, these buildings would be shorter than the front.
Okay. Uh, but it seems like not by much, right? I mean, those gotta be a story and a half.
Yeah, those are probably a story and a half, but as we, as we look at this from the rear, you're going to see the full first floor, windows on the second floor, and then additional attic space above that. So I'd call this a two and a half story building here versus a one and a half outback.
Okay, fair enough. Um, okay.
Also in our archi, our, our architectural, you know, um, look at this, you know, there's no park, parking is behind the building and there's no, there's no indication that there are apartments above it, looking at it from the College Highway. So I think they did a good representation of hiding the fact that there are apartments there. And actually, they're going to be quite large apartments, some, some people's houses are that big.
Okay. Um, anything else, Dr. Wallace, that you wanted to, um, discuss?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, Alan, is there anything else you needed to add before I turn it over to the board members?
No, actually Randy and I typically get together and go over a lot of the, a lot of the questions. I, I really, I appreciate Randy's help, you know, it's good to be thorough. Some of those may not be retained, but at least he's brought it up to your attention.
Okay.
And in the stormwater, as it's designed, we analyze the, um, the pre and the post. There's less water coming off the site than there is before. And, uh, there's a lot of thought process built into those retention ponds. These are, this site is a hundred percent different from the ones we looked at over the past couple of months where there are high groundwater problems. I don't anticipate any water problems coming on this site.
Okay. All right. Um, board members, anybody have any questions or comments other than Marcus? All right, Marcus.
Okay. One question and one comment. First question, uh, warehousing, warehouse. Alan, you're going to have to help me. Is that allowed in the BR zone?
Yes, um, you know, with, they, they can't have sawmills, pressing companies, things along that line, but a dry, dry cold, uh, warehouse wouldn't be allowed.
And these would be different or separate operations from the retail in the front of the buildings?
That would be, I, I would assume so. I know Dr. Wallace, he's going to have enough, enough to contend with as it was his front buildings. But, um, these buildings will be something similar to like what's on Hudson Drive right now, where we do allow, um, storage type containers, you know, within range.
Okay. And, uh, one comment on the driveway that enters College Highway. I think it would be good to have a left turn lane coming out of the, uh, development onto the road because College Highway has a lot of traffic and somebody could sit there quite a while trying to take a left turn. So I think it would be good if you had, you know, one entrance lane, one left turn lane and one right turn lane. That's just a comment to help with the, uh, traffic flow.
Thank you.
What's the size, Chris?
That was a good one. Yeah, so the, the size of these drive aisles are twenty-four feet in width, which is, um, I'm, I'm looking right now at, at regulations for parking loading in Southwick. I, I like that idea very much. I think that would make a lot of sense on this site because of, uh, the anticipated traffic flow, not only offsite. If all three phases are built out, it could be a decent amount of traffic leaving this site. And with the, with, um, anticipated traffic on College Highway, that'd be great. I'm just wondering if your bylaws, uh, give us a twenty-four feet maximum width, so.
Alan, do you, um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, basically that would, that, that is for, you know, town roads, but it, as far as it comes to the intersection, because you're only, you're going to be pulling a queue in, it's not going to really affect, you're only going to be coming back twenty, twenty-two feet. And they have enough room to do that. No, it won't, it won't affect the whole road, it's just going to affect where it comes into the intersection.
And they can, they can size it however they wish right there.
Yes, and they'll give it a little bit, more, more turning radius on it also possibly.
Yeah, I think that gives us a lot of positive design flexibility as we look at the other phases. I'm going to bring you back to this, uh, full, full, full build out. And right now, we're showing three curb cuts, but if they were, all three of them were given the availability of a left, a dedicated left turn lane, a dedicated right turn lane and an entrance lane, we might be able to get rid of one of these curb cuts in favor of two larger curb cuts. I think that would be good for the city of Southwick and for site traffic flow.
Good job, Marcus.
Um, okay, if, uh, if you, Chris, just, uh, I have a couple of things and I, I just, I took notes, so I made, this may be kind of all over the place, but let me just try to decipher my notes here. Um, and actually, can you put up the parking, um, plan again? Um, now, so I just want to make sure so that when we're right, I mean, when we're writing everything, um, with this particular use, um, I think you need to have loading spaces with the retail. Uh, I believe under the bylaws, I gotta look, I'm trying to pull it up right now, but I believe that's required.
I believe it is as well. We, we have one loading area, uh, right here for the two retail slash office spaces. Um, I don't think Dr. Wallace has tenants yet, so we did these parking calculations based on a retail use. There's a chance these buildings would move to an office use, but that would be less of a parking requirement as well as like reduced loading. So we went with the conservative design route of retail spaces here, which, uh, we have a loading area provided there.
Yes, Mike, see how it's, it's curved, it's curved, it's curved in.
Yep, no, that's.
For vehicles to come in.
Yep, no, I, I didn't see that the first time around, so that takes care of that. And there's handicap parking, obviously, I'm assuming, um, because that gets included in our decision. Um, I, I see the crosscuts in the front, I assume those are, it's, it's difficult with the size of it, but I assume those are handicap spots next to the.
Yes, right. One centered right on the building and the other ones in the rear have, um, sent, two of them centrally.
Okay.
Here it's crosshatch where he's got his leral.
Yep.
There's two, there's.
Two on each.
Either side of that entrance strip.
Um.
So that allows six handicap vehicles.
I believe exceeds the ADA requirements.
It, it does.
Now, what, um, for the warehouse. How do you calculate the parking? Can you just scroll, uh, go up a little bit so I can see your calculation there? Warehouse, one per employee plus one five thousandths. I, I just can't remember if there's, is there a warehouse? Is there an actually warehouse use in the parking? Um, oh yeah, I guess, I guess.
Yes, there is.
One per employee, one, okay. Uh, one per five thousand. All right, I see it. Industrial, okay. Um, got that. So, um, you mentioned all being fenced in, um, oh, you mentioned at least one, I assume all of them are being fenced in.
The dumpsters, yes.
Um, the, um, what's the, um, the front, the, the College Highway side? Is there plantings or anything on that side?
Uh, so PA being, uh, London plane tree, these are pretty large trees, a sycamore, a smaller sycamore variety right here, as well as, uh, SR, which is the, uh, Japanese, uh, tree lilac. So it's a, a blooming deciduous tree. Uh, four, four trees along the front edge.
All right, and then there's some dividing between the buildings, um.
We have arborvitae around this dumpster area, arborvitae along the Spence Road dividing these two sort of uses. Uh, we've got two white pines proposed here between the buildings, but far enough away. Those are pretty normal for that area of, uh, Southwick. Uh, this would be a zelkova, which, uh, is shaped specifically to be more of a columnar tree so that it doesn't impact the building, but it's a, it's a deciduous tree. Um, and then we have juniper horizontalis, which some of these slopes out here are steeper. So this, this is a horizontal growing juniper, which is a slope stabilizer naturally. Uh, the PN is a, um, Mugo pine, so those are a, a shorter deciduous, sort, shorter coniferous tree, but, uh, it's a, it's an alternative to arborvitae's, which are overplanted. They're a little wider and a little taller, a little slower growing, but a, a nice choice, I think, to complement or to not have this site be all.
Arborvitae.
Arborvitae.
Okay.
And then, uh, these witch hazels along this conservation area.
Okay.
And the CP, I think is a, this is a crab apple, though. I, I think at some point we will change this to a Hawthorne tree, if that's acceptable, uh, because of the waste from crab apples.
Um, so, I guess, comment question, whatever it turns out to be as it comes out of mouth here, but, uh, the warehousing, um, you know, uh, on Hudson, it has been, I don't want to call it an issue, but it has come up frequently where the use that wants to go in there is such that re, require, you know, oil separators in the ground and we, you know, and, and tight tanks and all that. So is there any consideration, I guess, to that or that being a use that you want to take care of now versus later, or, um, is that in, in the, in the works at all?
Um, you know, I'm going to lean on Dr. Wallace, uh, for some of that question, but what we're presenting now are storage units which don't have any hazardous materials being stored there and don't require oil and grit, grit separators. Uh, that does limit the potential tenants to this building, but it also limits, uh, potential pollutants on this site, so.
You wouldn't want to have, have any, any auto storage or motorcycles or anything like that, that could be hazardous. I wouldn't suspect that that, that would be, it would be a dry and possibly a cold area.
You know, I see these as like a plumbing supply store where there's a retail area in the front where you walk in to buy a plumbing fixture and in the back, there's a warehouse that stores plumbing fixtures. So, you know, I, I see you somewhere to that.
Okay. And I, again, it's, it, as I characterize it, it's somewhat of a comment, I just, it has come up a bunch.
Yeah.
With some of the properties on Hudson where they don't have it in and it becomes a cost, um, prohibitive issue for, for renting those out. So I just wanted to at least mention that.
Michael.
Yes.
Do we want to use some term warehouse?
Do we what?
Want to use some terminology other than warehouse for that? Such as, uh, dry supply or, you know.
I, I, I mean.
Something like that, because to me, I always thought warehousing was allowed in the industrial zone. I don't know that we've done any warehousing in, uh, business zone.
I was telling, I didn't want to label them storage because of the lack of storage. Uh, it's not a self-storage unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to quickly look and I, I'm sure we could figure out, uh, yeah, I mean, one of the things allowed in the B zone, which would carry over is wholesale business and storage warehouse. Um, so I, you know.
To me, that would, to me, putting something like that in would be useful. So people don't think it's a heavy-duty industrial warehouse kind of thing.
You could put in no vehicular motors, uh, storage allowed. Plus also, whatever goes in there, it would have to get clearance from the fire department anyway. The fire department's going to want to know what type of materials, what type of chemicals in case there wasn't a problem, you know, how to fight the fire correctly. But I think Mr. Wallace would probably, wouldn't want to have vehicular storage or anything like that because his insurance rates would pretty, go up pretty high, I think.
Um, okay. Um, I think, I think that was, oh, oh, what's the, have you guys gone or had conversations with, conversa, with, uh, with, um, conservation yet?
No, we haven't presented for conservation.
Okay.
That's on the agenda for Monday night.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, any other board questions? All right, hearing none, any, uh, town officials have any questions or comments?
Doug, here. Joe?
Sure. Um, I think it's a great idea. Um, I'm not against it one bit. Only questions I have, and I'm not looking for answers, is the snow plowing, where does that go? I mean, these are beautiful designs and then of course, when it snows and actually snows, there's always an issue. I don't know how the wetlands work with or without the ballard of snow. You go in there, I'll plow. Any other question or comment is the tight tanks. You know, the warehouses are great and, um, everyone has great intentions of only renting to certain people, whether it's retail or whether it's warehouse. And, and I know you want to save a few pennies here and there and I get that, but the size of this project isn't a few pennies and I, and I commend you on spending money in Southwick. We really do appreciate it. Me, Doug, and Russ, the other, uh, I think he's a clerk now, but anyways, we really do appreciate it. But you gotta look at those tight tanks because the minute somebody wants to throw something back there and, well, you're young and everything's great and you're involved, but as the years go on and you're not involved, next you know there's something back there that you didn't want back there and those tight tanks do come into play. And it's pennies on the dollar today versus cutting floors down the road. That's it. It's a win-win. Thanks for coming to Southwick. I'm done.
Thank you, and I will absolutely, uh, take that into consideration and talk to the architect about it for sure.
Thank you.
Any other, um, Doug?
First of all, congratulations, Mr. Wallace. It looks like a, a great project and it'll be a welcome addition to the town of Southwick. And, um, I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Diddy, you know, as far as some of the planning and, you know, we've seen these kinds of, um, office condos, if you will. There, there was something similar conducted off of Wally Way and those guys have had some, some challenges and some, and good tenants that come into that place. And, you know, the warehouse piece or it's, it's kind of a staging area. Your example of a plumber is a great one. There's one on, on Wally Way that today is, the front of the shop is a retail shop for signs and printed material and stuff, and the back is where they actually do the printing. So I mean, it's a, that's a perfect prototypical use of, of that type of site that you're doing and it's kind of a, a great way to maximize the, um, you know, your finished space, your high-cost space, and then your unfinished space for production needs or what have you, or light storage. I think light storage is more the, for a particular business, not renting out like a self-storage, I think is really what you're getting at here. And I think that would be a great, um, these types of, of units might be a great addition to the town in combination with the mixed use in the front. My only suggestion is, is to take a look at that in case you do, in the backside of those, if you have the depth, um, I know people aren't keen on articulating trucks or large. I know people aren't keen on articulating trucks or larger trucks, but if you do get a, a singular tenant that wants to take a whole building, that actually does become quite restrictive for loading if you can't pack something with a bigger trailer back there. And, um, but other than that, you know, love to happy, have you in town. If there's anything else that, uh, you know, I hope this board and I'm sure other boards have been very cooperative and helpful. And if, if there's anything else that the town can do to help you, please let us know.
Thanks very, very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, I don't think there are any other town officials on here. Any members of the public that have any comments or questions with regard to this application? Nope. Okay. All right. Um, one last chance. Anybody else? Did I miss anybody? Okay. So I think, especially since we have the next meeting next Tuesday, it looks like. My inclination is to continue the meeting over to week, let, um, Chris provide whatever was missing from the submission. Randy can take a quick look at it. You may even be able to talk to Randy in the meantime about some of these issues. Not that they're huge issues, but just talk to him more about, you know, what you talked to us today about. And we can put it on for the next meeting in one week and, uh, hopefully close it out there. It seems like there isn't too much there. Um, can actually probably start, at least start in on writing the decision. And that may, you know, cause us to have a few more questions, but, um, start that process going forward so that we're, we're pretty far along by next meet. Anybody have?
I basically have the decision built, except for a couple of additive things.
Okay. Um, so that's good. So it sounds like you can get it over and we can start to take a look at, at that. Anybody have any issues with that or questions or comments? No? Okay. So, um, do I, uh, let's, Alan, is there, or Megan, is there anything on for this, for next Tuesday?
No, we don't have anything at all. This would be, right now, this will be the only thing because there's not enough time. If there were a special permit were to come in, we wouldn't be able to advertise it for the meeting. So Dr. Walz's project is the only thing that we will, that will be on.
All right. It would certainly be the only, I mean, there could be smaller things.
There could be a couple of A and Rs or something like that, but.
Signs or something. Okay. Perfect. Um, so why don't we put this on for seven fifteen? On July seventh. Do I, first of all, is that Dr. Walls and Chris, does that work for you folks?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will be available.
Perfect. Uh, so do I hear a motion to continue this here to seven fifteen on July?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Uh, do I hear a second? Anyone? Thank you. All those, and we'll do a roll call vote since we're on Zoom. Uh, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Anybody else want to join in here? Jessica, you're a voting member. Yeah, you're.
Jessica Thor and I, I didn't hear Spina go.
Where's Richard? He's not speaking.
Dave Spina, did you put your vote in?
I just didn't do anything yet either.
Yeah. Hudson, Spina, you guys there? Hold on.
Can't hear us.
Yeah.
And Spina looks to be gone.
Mr. Utzinger gave a thumbs up.
Okay.
Yep.
Put that on the record.
That, I, I think that works on Zoom.
It works.
All right. Perfect. All right. So we will continue that, uh, to next week and hopefully wrap it up then. All right. Let's see here. So Chris and Dr. Walls, unless you, you're certainly welcome to stay around for the rest of the meeting, but, um, that is all we need from you folks. So you are certainly welcome to, uh, take leave of this.
Thank you guys very much for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
For the details, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Eight o'clock. We have an A and R for thirty-eight more. Let me see if I can pull up something here. Okay. Everybody can see that?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Uh, Alan, you want to just tell us about this if you could?
Yes. Is Steve Salvini on or you're, okay, the surveyor. Basically what it is, it's approximately eighty-five acres of land. And there is, there's an existing house and what the applicant would like to do is, take out that one lot and they have somebody who's interested in purchasing it. So they just want to do that one A and R, which, which has enough frontage, square footage. Am I so on?
Yep. I'm sorry. Hold on.
And I think what the intention is right now is just pulling that one lot out. There, there may be additional lots in the future, but I know there's some working that's going on because of, because of being in an agricultural. And, um, that would have to be worked out, but the applicant would like to go ahead just with this one lot. Basically, this is on Mortvining Road. If you're going towards Connecticut.
Yep.
On your, uh, left-hand side or the east side.
Okay.
Right across from the Flynn, um, farm.
Okay. And then.
And Janet, you're, Janet, you're the applicant, correct?
Yes, I am. One of them.
Yes.
And Alan, I mean, just looking at it now, it just doesn't seem to be any issues that I can see. Did you see anything?
No, there's nothing at all. They, it's a good application.
All right. Any questions from the board?
The, uh, the parcel is advertised on a Realtor's website with thirteen lots.
Yeah, that's, that's premature. That's pre, that's premature. I think the, you know, that the applicant or, uh, might've gone out to see, to get a feeling of the, uh, the area. There, there was one draft showing that, but that plan has been withdrawn at this point, at this point. And there may be some other interest, there may be some other interest in someone buying it as an APR or to use it as a farming, farming use, a larger parcel. But that's, that's going to be between the applicant and the town and the, I know conservation and the agricultural would like to see it stay in the open, open space or APR.
Okay. And there's an, there's an existing house on this.
That has the house on it. The driveway is going to be removed. It's showing it. The driveway is going to be contained. There's a note, note, note number two, saying that the driveway is going to be relocated to the center of the, um, proposed parcel. It's, it's virtually flat. There's no wetlands, guide rail or anything in the, in holding that up.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Do I hear a, a motion to endorse this plan? Such that approval is not under the subdivision control law is not required.
Marcus Phelps, make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye. David Sutton, aye. Nate Spina, aye.
Uh, who are we missing here?
I can't do A and Rs.
Can't talk.
Oh, Utz. Did I hear Utz or no?
He did a thumbs up again.
Thumbs up again. All right. Perfect.
He uses thumb.
That's good.
Okay. So, um, uh, why don't we, uh, why don't we figure out, uh, everybody who's, needs to sign it, why don't we have it over at town hall? And they can just call Alan or Megan and try to set up a time to swing over and sign it so that we can, uh, have that signed and.
The lobby is the only thing that's open right now, but they could call, they could call up or make arrangements.
Yeah. So why don't we do it that way? And, um, you know, get it signed as soon as we can.
Alan?
Yes.
Are you still there? Are you still going in every day from, uh, in the morning?
No, I haven't been. They don't really want me to go in. I've been doing everything as remotely. I sneak in every so often with Megan to go over some of the logistics. Megan has been kind of going in on a regular basis, not, you know, part-time. So if you set something up with her and her time schedule, she could meet you downstairs, right, Megan?
Yep, definitely.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry. Hold on one second.
Doug, can I ask one question? Why, does the Zoom, this is Zoom that we have up now, does that carry over until next week? Hello?
No, it does not.
Oh, yeah. We have to get a new Zoom number, um, account.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, for next, um,
You'll, you'll do it?
I can set it up. Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right. You're good? All right. Sorry. All right. So let's go down to routine business.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can you take the, uh, the other item at the same address as the A and R while you have the applicant here?
Uh, of course. Let me just, I'm trying to pull up the agenda, um, but why don't we go to that? What is the other issue? Oh, the writer first refusal?
Yeah, I, I saw it on your agenda. That's, it caught my eye.
Yep. No, that's, uh, perfect. Um, all right. So, um, Alan, why don't you fill us in on that if you could?
Basically, what had happened is earlier, uh, last week, we had received the thirteen lot subdivision, oh, the A and Rs that were shown. And I was talking to the, uh, surveyor and there was some talk about, you know, right of first refusal because it is in the agricultural, um, region. And then this, in the actual, a letter went around and, um, all of the departments, if they're interested in trying to preserve it or trying to do something with it, the select board is looking for input. I don't know, you know, right now, even though it's not on, it's not on the agenda, that was, that was created before we, um, snuck the A and R in just for one lot. So if there's some interest from anybody on the planning board that's interested in preserving it, um, we need to do input to the select board. I know conservation, agricultural, all of them have that opportunity.
Is there a timeframe that it needs to be done within?
Doug, isn't it one hundred and twenty days?
Well, we try to, uh, the statutory is a hundred and twenty days. But the, there was a, a writer for, uh, chapter sixty-one A removal, writer first refusal document that's already been put to the Board of Selectment. So the clock is already running. I was hoping to hear, actually, if, if you guys were gonna, if the applicant was going to say anything either way, because of my understanding that there was a potential that was going to be withdrawn and that the initial request was to be this A and R. And then it would buy time if there was another entity that was looking to, to take custody of the land.
And Janet, Janet is still here on, on board.
I'm still here.
Yes, I, I appreciate that. And thank you very much, Janet, for coming. I just, I know Ag had made it clear that that was a, a piece of property that they were interested in looking at. It was on their list of properties that the Board of Selectment had asked for a couple of years ago, but it's not in the open space plan. That was just ratified by the state. Um, obviously there's not a lot of money, actually, there's no money in town right now for us to go out and acquire this parcel. So they were going to talk, you know, Ag and some others were going to go talk to other, other entities to see if there's funding sources available to look at this. But, um, I was just curious if, if, um, I don't want to mispronounce your name, Mrs.
Just Janet is in that nation.
Okay, thank you. Um, how to, uh, you know, if, if there was going to be an actual withdrawal of the application that was already filed um, until such a time as either they could come to some agreement or then you're going to go and sell it outright and do it, uh, another request to have that land removed from sixty-one A. Because we don't like to go a hundred and twenty. The short of it is the border doesn't like to go a hundred and twenty days because nine out of ten times there's a buyer and everybody forgot to do the paperwork and it's three days before the closing. So we try not to draw out the process, but in this case, there is appetite in town or, uh, interest in town with, to, to at least go through the diligence to look at it. But I don't want to run the clock on a landowner just because we have a hundred and twenty days.
It's my understanding that, um, I had no idea there was ever an interest in, by down in the property. Um, we have been in the town hall many, many times. Of course, the last, and asked, was it uh, and the town owned the property and we were always told, no, the town has absolutely no interest in it. They're pursuing selling it. And so we were advised officially to remove the crop land from sixty-one A. Have, you know, proceeded to, um, divide the frontage into, into building posed lots. And then we found out say, two days ago or three days ago, that was interest, you know, to serve this land as crop land and agricultural, which my sister-in-law would be fully in support of. Would love to see.
Uh-oh.
We're kind of breaking up a little bit.
So the real application was, and I think have that. We're asking that the lot that the house sits on, which right now on that sheet that you have consists of just about the, um, these thousands of feet. You have a view and that's what we're asking. There'd be a minimum amount of acreage that would be withdrawn from sixty-one A. We're asking that you vote on that because the original one was withdrawn. We just want to, we just want to pull out this one parcel and sell the house.
Yep.
Lose the buyer. We'd be disappointed to have that.
So Doug, do you need some writing?
I, I mean, actually, I don't want to tie up your meeting here. I just was hoping to get some clarity for, for everybody here. For the A and R piece, you guys did the exact right thing, right? You had a plan in front of you that has adequate area frontage and, and access. Boom, that's done. So, um, you know, maybe I can, I, I can circle back with, I can circle back with Janet tomorrow. Alan, if you have her contact information, if you could send it to me, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah. From what I understand, I'm talking to Steve Salvini.
Yep.
Um, there is a revised, um, they're going, they're going to withdraw the thirteen lots and only come in for the one lot.
We already did that.
Great. I did, I haven't seen it yet. I personally haven't seen it yet. So that's great. So, and, and as the, as Dick Utzinger would say, great. Um, so, yeah, it's great. And like I said, I'll. great. Um, so, yeah, that's great. And like I said, I'll, I can circle back with.
It's, you should have on with a $75 check. We, we drove up to do that, so you should have that paperwork. Are you saying you don't have it?
I, I haven't been in Town Hall to check my mail in a couple of days, so I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to tell you yes or no. I, I probably do. If you did it, I have it, right?
Yeah, you're the person.
I'm the chair, I'm the chair of the select board right now. So, this has come in front of the select board last week, and we carried it over for two weeks to try to figure out where we are here. And then I've been corresponding with the Ag, COM, and Concom.
Why I apologize, because we don't know the members of the, we're not, we're not in town, and I don't know all the members of the mission, so.
Fair enough. Sometimes that's better.
Yeah, I think.
Like I said, I'll get your contact information from Alan and circle back with you tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, Doug, I think they came, I think they came in Friday to do that, um, reassignment.
Great, that's excellent. Thank you. Sorry to tie up your meeting. Thank you.
So, Michael, we approved the A and R for this one lot. Is there any reason why we can't send a memo to the select board saying the planning board does not have any need for this land? It's, it's not, I don't think in any of our planning, as far as, uh, a water supply, anything, you know, to that.
Well, I don't, I don't ca, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. I just, if it's not, if it's not active, and that's why I was asking Doug about, I mean, if it's not active, then we don't have to do anything right now. If he doesn't need the input from the planning board, then we don't need to do anything.
It may be mute if, if they come into some other agreements with another landowner.
Yeah, okay.
It's just something to bring to the, the board's attention.
So, we.
Okay. Um, all right, let's see what else we have here.
Yeah, some decisions.
Yeah, I thought we already did decisions. No, did we not do decisions?
We did some decisions, but these are new ones. This, this is, um, uh, Two States Avenue, uh, Sunnyside, and. Right, Megan?
Yep, that's.
Sorry, hold on, let me just, um.
Because these were all talked about, talked at at the last meeting, and when the meeting was closed, you had us prepare decisions for those properties. And I had a little bit of conversation with Marcus on one of them. Uh, the one on Lakeview Avenue.
All right, Lakeview was the.
It's the two lots behind the rail.
That was a stormwater only, right?
All of them were stormwater only.
Oh, that's right. They were, yeah, okay.
The Lakeview one was a little more intricate because they did, they didn't ask for waivers because what they did is they had to do a whole hydraulic analysis, as well as silt fence, you know, so they, where the other two, the one on Sunnyside and one on Two States, they asked for waivers on a certain section, which the, the board acknowledged, and those are part of the decision.
Okay, um. Did they get?
We didn't get those, did we? Did we get sent those decisions? To review?
Megan?
No, I didn't send them to the entire board.
Did I? Hold on one second. I just, I need to look at my email here, um.
Megan sent an email, and it probably had five, um, things addressed it on all in one email.
Yes, that's correct.
Um, oh, the one, okay, from yesterday.
Info for meeting for tomorrow night.
Okay, I got it. Um, so, is, is, are any of these urgent? Are you getting pushed on any of these three?
The only one we were getting really pushed on was the one on Two States Avenue.
Well.
The one on Sunnyside is going to be held up anyway because one of the lots is an estate lot, and they haven't, they haven't sent us in any information regarding the estate lot.
All right.
I know the individual on Two States, they're just concerned because they want to, um, from what I understand, they sold their house in Connecticut and they want to advance, but I, you know, it's up to the board because, you know, if, if we can review it, you know, next.
That's what I was, I mean, wait, a week between.
One week, one week I don't think is going to create a problem.
All right, um, so why don't we do that? Why don't we just kick it over to the next meeting? I will shoot it, actually, Megan, if you could just shoot it around to the board, and let everybody take a look at it, that would be great. I just, you know, um, I, I was, I didn't get a chance to look at it only because I just got back from vacation, so I just, I just been swamped, so, um.
Yep.
We'll take a look at it and deal with it, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
So, Megan, those will be put on the agenda for the next meeting then?
Okay.
Yep.
Well, then, well, basically, we're just gonna have 72, 774, continuing a public hearing, and then right after that will be routine business. And this, that and minutes will be under routine business.
Okay.
Okay. Um, did we ever, did we ever reorganize?
I don't believe so, no.
You're supposed to do that tonight.
Okay, that's what I thought. Um, all right, so, um, anybody want to be the chair?
You're funny, Mike.
Uh.
We still have to have a vote, I think.
I nominate Mike Doherty for chairman of the board.
Second.
Rob's second.
Uh, I guess we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Michael Doherty, uh, I'm gonna pass on this one. Go ahead.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right, awesome. Um, uh, anybody want to be vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Marcus Phelps for vice chair if I can.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Spina, all right, uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps abstained.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, um, we no longer have open space. Um, what else do we need appointments to?
The preservation committee.
Thank you. Who's on it right now? Is it Sutton or is it Spina?
Um, I'm on it now.
Okay. Um, desire to stay on it?
I, I have no problem staying on. I'd be fine.
Okay.
If somebody else, if somebody else really wants to, that's fine too.
Any takers?
David Spina as our representative to the community preservation committee. Marcus.
All right, Mark. Uh, second, who seconded?
I did, Sutton.
All right, um, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina abstain?
Jessica Thornton, aye.
All right, anyone, uh, is there any other appointments that we need to make that people are participating in?
Valley Planning Commission representative.
Thank you. Um, that's you?
Yep.
Okay. You good staying on with that?
Yeah, they haven't been meeting very much lately.
Well, that's an easy assignment then. Um, I will nominate Marcus for that.
I'll second that.
All right, Sutton seconds that. Um, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps abstained.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay, um, all right, anything else? Any other appointments?
I'll be submitting my letter of interest within a week, so.
Okay. All right, when we get that, we'll deal with that. Um, anything else? Anything to discuss?
Is there any minute, minutes from last?
Oh, you know what, why don't we just kick those over? Um, I'll let everybody, I'll, again, I didn't forward that around and I should have, uh, as I'm looking at my email. Megan emailed me about it and I just didn't forward it or respond. Um, so, that's where I was last.
She did send them out to us.
Oh, did she?
Yes.
Is there, is there comments and you guys are all good and you've done whatever you need to do with them?
Yes.
Then I'll defer to you folks. I, I didn't get a chance to look through them, so, but, um, if you want to vote on them, that's fine.
I think we're good.
Okay, so, um, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from June 10th?
Marcus Phelps, so moved.
Do I hear a second?
David Sutton, second.
Um, roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
And you know, I sort of been ignoring, uh, is Dick still on or is he off?
Been gone for a while.
He's gone, yeah, all right. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't getting a thumbs up. All right. Um, so, all right, uh, Sutton, I think you're up.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Dave Spina, second.
Well, Doug's got an honorary vote on that one. Uh, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay.